With that, just want to talk a little bit about process. The Mesa County Board of Commissioners, ever since John and I came on the board, have been talking about this Resource Management Plan. We've been at the table. We also received 1,800 signatures on a petition asking us to keep roads open. And we take our constituents' input very seriously. And so, we've worked with many user groups. I know there's a common misconception that we're only working with motorized, or only working with hunters, or different groups. We are taking comments from all people. And even from people who believe that the Resource Management Plan is good, and that roads should be closed. And there are some of those people in our community. So, we are taking input from everyone, and being able to relay that to BLM. And so, a few months back, the county solicited what we called vested interest recreational routes. Routes that were really important to the community, that had recreational value in some way, shape, or form with different user groups. And so, we received about 1,484, as far as miles, of roads that this community identified as being important, as vested interest routes. Of those routes, 1,091 are not scheduled to be closed. So, it's about 74 percent, excuse me. And then, there are 393, about 26 percent, that were scheduled to be closed. Some of them were scheduled to be closed because they were wildlife emphasis areas, wilderness study areas, areas of critical environmental concern. There's, I know some people of interest is the Castle Rocks area in Deback. And so, that is potentially being closed. Now, let BLM go more into this, as a tribal spiritual area. And then, there are some miles on the Sarlacc. I don't understand what that is, but I'm sure there are people in this room who do. Where 11 miles was closed, but 11 miles was reopened, or will be reopened and rerouted. So, they're taking that as a net wash. And then, there are 79 miles that are, we have no legal access to. So, they're behind private property. And so, BLM needs to close those, so that they do not encourage trespass. And they can go into their reasonings a little bit more. As you all know, the Mesa County Commissioners, when the plan came out, we filed a protest, timely protest. We asked the Governor's Office for help. Originally, there was some discrepancy as to what type of help they were willing to give us. But, they have now come to the table with BLM to help us to resolve some of these issues. So, of the 393 miles of routes that were scheduled to be closed, after lots of discussion and meetings with BLM, BLM has offered to defer, so not close, not make any decisions, really, on about 207 of those 393 routes. And so, those will be deferred for us to be able to talk through at a later time, submit comments, and protest. And so, that leaves about 180 miles roughly. I didn't actually subtract it out, but that's roughly the amount of miles that we have that are subject to closure, that I really, at this point, want to focus on for today's town hall. We've got maps in the hall, if you haven't seen it. The maps show the 393 that are scheduled to be closed, proposed to be closed. They also are showing the 180 that will be proposed to be closed now. And then, the 207 roughly miles of road that it will be deferred, that we will have an opportunity to talk about at a later time. And so, originally, we were asking BLM for an extension of six months to give the community an opportunity to articulate why these routes need to remain open, or these miles of routes need to remain open. BLM is not in a position necessarily to give us that six-month extension. And so, their compromise to us was to defer the 207 miles, and give us more time, even probably more time than six months, to talk through why those routes need to remain open. So, the Commissioners have not made a formal decision on that yet. But, that, BLM has come to the table to work with us as a community to talk about these routes in more detail at a later time. Now, that doesn't mean we should be forgetting about that. I don't want you leaving this meeting thinking that you can, that we've saved those routes, because we haven't. We just need to talk about it in more detail later. What will be really helpful for us as Commissioners is if you can come to us with information. So, if you have been riding on this route since 1940, and you've got historical information, historical data to show that, that would be good information for the Mesa County Commissioners to have. We do have some resources. We have staff on Tuesdays and Thursdays at our planning office. And they are willing to take information, to talk through the closed routes, and show you the maps. Because I know that right now, online, it can look a little bit confusing. We have worked with BLM, and they've been great at accommodating us to change their maps, to make it more user-friendly. So, hopefully, you can be able to go either on the Mesa County website or the BLM website to take a look at these routes and see which ones are being closed. I will say, from Mesa County Commissioner perspective, at this point, it is hard for us to articulate why a certain road should or should not be closed. That's why we need the community to give us feedback and say, "We need this route opened, and this is why." And this way, we can articulate that to the BLM. Once the Record of Decision on this Resource Management Plan comes out, there will be a 30-day appeal period. And the county will be working to the extent we can on a potential appeal. But, we want to make sure that we've got information. And that's where the community comes. If you want these roads closed, come to us with information. If you want them open, come to us with information. We really have gone as far with county resources as we can at this point on research. And so, I want to give you just a little bit more background. Of the county vested interest roads, not recreational routes, but roads that were important to Mesa County, there was 167 miles, and they're only closing five. And some of that was discrepancies on the county's maps, and wilderness study area, and some redundant roads. So, we've made out pretty well with that. And then, of the county maintained roads, there are 246 miles, and all of those have been kept open. So, just so that you know, though, while we are focused on the vested interest routes, that's what the community has identified as important, BLM is closing between Mesa County and Garfield County, 852 miles, and then, 250 for administrative. These were not routes we're focused on, because they were not brought to us as important to the community to keep open. So, just so that you understand, there's a lot of categories of these miles of routes. And we're trying to work through as much as we can. But again, we're going to need the community to help us in order to do that. We do appreciate the Governor's Office being here. There is a representative, and I'll have him talk at the end about the Governor's rule and all this. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Justin and then Commissioner McGinnis to give their comments.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad all of you came down to the meeting, and hopefully can look at the maps and et cetera. Since I've been here, it seems like we've worked on travel management from the second week we were here. And 72 to 75 percent of Mesa County is federal lands. I don't have the exact percentage for the BLM. So, the big majority of our county is federally owned. And we do know and understand that all of these routes are very important to all of you, whether you want to hike, or you want to mountain bike, or ride in your ATV, or the Jeep. And I've been in Mesa County for well over 50 years. And I have not been on every road, but I've been in a lot of areas from the Deback down to the southern part of Mesa County, to Mesa. So, a lot of the routes I do know, but I guarantee I do not, I've never been on all of them. One of the comments on one of the other meetings, and it was not necessarily with the BLM office here, but you have to, their statement was, "They didn't have ATVs. They weren't real popular until the late 80s." Well, that's true. But I can remember in the 60s, there was an awful lot of Jeeps parked in a lot of people's driveways. And I look at some of the old CJ II Jeeps. They're not really any bigger than some of the new four-seater ATVs. So, and a different category of vehicle, but nonetheless, they used a lot of these roads. And I did a lot of hunting out of a CJ II Jeep, long before four-wheelers were ever even imagined. Also, was amazing to me, in the 60s, dirt bikes were kind of new to me. I had a Harley. I didn't know much about dirt bikes. And, but when I got to Grand Junction, and they were riding by the airport with dirt bikes in the early 60s. And I never really got into that. That's a real popular sport today, and it's evolved into much different equipment than they had in those days. But nonetheless, those gray hills out there by the airport were, dirt bikes were making dust for many years out there. So, that's nothing new. The Commissioners, as we worked through this thing, we actually hired a consultant twice to help us with putting together our comments to the BLM, which I think was beneficial to us, and explain how, comment, why we should be doing this and that. And a lot of our road people put a lot of hours in. Keith Fife, and I don't know if it was Keith Corey, did a lot of work on it. And Rudy Bevins, they did a lot of work on it. So, our staff did a lot of work also. So, here we are today. It's probably better than I, it looked at one point a few weeks ago. But we still have a lot of work to do, and we're going to need your input to try and facilitate these 207 routes that are, they say are disputed. How many we can keep open, I can't honestly answer that today. But we do need your input. We've got a good turnout of people. And hopefully, after, as we work through this thing, we can be successful at keeping more routes open. Thanks.
Well, thank you all for attending tonight. I think John hit the point right on the button, we're seeking input. So, tonight, as you can see by the crowd that we've got, it's not a rally. We're not looking for an argumentative meeting where we're going to take on the BLM or something like that. Tonight is purely fact-finding. We're trying to get from the people that know best. As John said, he's been on a lot of these trails, but he hadn't been on every trail. Some of you in this room may have been on a remote trail, or your grandpa, your grandma used this trail, or you knew that this is where you moved cattle, or this is how you got down to the river. Those facts are the ones we're trying to dig out. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is really kind of a fact search. So, to accommodate the size crowd that we've got, I think it would probably be polite if what you've said has already been said. We're taking note of it. And so, and as a courtesy to other people that would like to speak, if it's already been said, let us move on to somebody that's got something that's new to us. And also, if you can, again, we're, this is not where we want to go into long theoretical policy arguments. This is, please come up, give us any information you think we may not have in our hands. That's really what we want out tonight, correct, Madam Chairwoman? And of course, our Chairwoman's going to run the meeting. But other than that, you both have said, covered everything. We really didn't come here, have you come here to hear us. We asked you to come here and help us with these facts. This is one of the few opportunities we're going to have to reach out and pull this kind of stuff in. By the way, I want to acknowledge a couple of our elected officials. Ray, thanks for coming over. You've been key on this, Sheriff. And I'm sure we've got some other. And I also appreciate the BLM, but I really appreciate the kind of turnout. I wish, if we've got handicapped or somebody elderly or something, we could maybe seat a couple here. I'm happy to get my seat up if somebody needs to sit. But it's great turnout, but we don't have too big accommodations. So, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you to both Commissioner Justin and Commissioner McGinnis. So, at this point, I do want to reiterate that really what we're looking for is information tonight on these routes. We will have comment sheets that you can fill out with your name and information on specific routes. And again, our staff is available Tuesdays and Thursdays to have one-on-one meetings with constituents to talk about individual routes and the information that they may provide that could help the county in discussions with BLM. So, at this point, I want to bring up BLM. Joe, are you going to be speaking, or who?
I think both, a lot of people will.
Wayne, okay. So, Wayne Workmeister from the local office of BLM, I guess, will be the first person, or not, to speak. Somebody from BLM will be speaking, I do assure you. And I think they also have some maps and information that they're trying to get loaded on.
So, first of all, we wanted to thank the county for inviting us to give a, kind of a brief preview of where we've been since this thing began, and give a little bit of BLM story here. So, with that, go ahead, Michelle. We're talking about the Grand Junction Field Office. So, it's outlined here in the black line. It includes just over a million acres, surface acres of BLM land that's in the brown. So, we thought it important for those people that may have not have been engaged through the whole process to understand that the Resource Management Plan is a document that is kind of the visionary document for the management of that 1 million acres for the next 20 years. So, it's this 30,000-foot view of how we're going to take care of this land with the public's and the cooperating agency's input for the next 20 years or the foreseeable future. It determines the appropriate multiple uses of that area. And just for your information, the vast majority is in Mesa and Garfield Counties. And our goal in this plan is to try to create a balance that provides for the resource uses and the resource conservation of the area. And this particular Resource Management Plan also includes an appendix, which is the Travel Management Plan. That's an implementation-level decision that's included, and probably the majority of the reason most of you are here.
So, just to give you a little bit of background, the BLM started the travel planning process along with the Resource Management Plan around 2008. We started collecting data at that time about our inventory and other resource data. We started, at that time as well, collecting information from the public. We started in 2008, having RMP Resource Management Plan scoping meetings in three different areas, Grand Junction, Colburn, and Moab. We hosted travel management workshops, five or six of those, with over 200 participants. We had two separate travel management comment periods in between developments of, or starting the process and development of the draft. The reason all that's important is because the BLM was only required to do two things, and that is to have an RMP public scoping meeting at the beginning of the process, and then, a comment period during the draft. But BLM and this community in Grand Junction really saw the value of incorporating the community's involvement, and reaching out to the community and finding out not only what inventory was out there, but also what the community valued about those travel networks that were currently out on public land, so we could make informed decisions. So, after the comment period for the travel plan, or for the draft RMP, we extended the travel, we extended the comment period for 60 days, which was a total of 150 days, and hosted five open houses, again, only required to host one. The travel, we also had travel management community meeting in Grand Junction down at Two Rivers. We had a travel management training for community leaders, so that they could better inform their constituents and be better engaged in the process. We have a whole host of information available on our websites, presented information in Google Earth, and provided presentations at all of our user groups. We also work closely with Mesa County to develop training videos to help folks navigate all of this information and all the documents, so that they could be more informed again, and also provide us with meaningful comments that would help during the process. The cooperating involvement, cooperating agency involvement has been significant since the beginning of this process. I think, as Rose pointed out very well at the beginning, Mesa County, Fruta, Grand Junction, Palisade, Colburn, all those entities have been very much involved. They have been sitting at the table with us as we work through our travel plan in particular. So, the cooperators sat down with us and set representatives to sit down with us and talk through all of the uses, values associated with the routes. The draft plan took about five weeks to get through the route designations. And then, the final plan took about seven weeks to get through the designation. So, the cooperators have put a ton of their time and a ton of their effort into this process. Yeah, is it not loud enough? Is that better? Okay. I apologize. So, a lot of folks talked with us about the authority and guidance for travel planning. A couple of things that I think is important for folks is 43 CFR, which is Code of Federal Regulations. We are required to have all designations be based on the protection of the resources of public lands, the promotion of safety of all users, and to minimize conflicts among users. That comes up a lot in discussions with the public. The other thing that comes up a lot is RS2477. And that's not, this is not the time to talk RS2477, although, as the county Commissioners are requesting information that will help them pursue this, the travel management planning is not intended to address the validity of the RS2477 assertion. Though rights are determined through a process that's entirely independent from the BLM's process, and I think the county Commissioners will speak more to that later. Travel planning is a tool for us. It's a tool to achieve not only the laws that we spoke of just a second ago, but also to achieve our Resource Management Plan objectives. We received, between the draft and final, about 1,500 public comments. And in addition to those, we had more from the initial scoping. We carefully considered all of those in our final decisions. We are looking to balance access with resource protection, safety, and recreational enjoyment. And this is, travel planning is also an ongoing process that will take place throughout the life of this Resource Management Plan.
We wanted to highlight just an example of some of the stuff we're talking about when we're talking about the routes out there. This particular area on the screen is down by the gate, down by Gateway. And up there in the upper-left corner, you can see the town of Gateway. So, it's all that Mesa country up above there. Blue Mesa, Bull Mesa, Calamity Camp is up in there. And the area we're highlighting here is just to emphasize that when we went out and started doing our inventory on the routes, we was trying to be as transparent and open as possible, documenting every route that's out there. Now, the areas that are highlighted in red, you'd probably have a hard time finding them if you was driving down that black road. And the map on the right is showing you that the areas highlighted in red we're showing is closed. And the reason we're doing that is since we put them in the database, it's really important, or we don't have any choice, we have to designate them. You might notice that from the black line to the edge of the red there, it's maybe a quarter of a mile from that scale down at the bottom. So, when you're on the black line, you're very close to the rim in that country. So, even though there's six miles of red routes that are being closed, it's not really limiting the access to public lands down there. We did provide the access to the areas on the points, and feel like there's still really good access for the public to a Mesa like this. And it's just merely an example to emphasize some of that.
So, in the travel plan, you'll see that open in open areas, we have 290 miles of routes that are available to the public, limited to administrative and permitted uses, about 260. No legal public access, about 334. And as Rose pointed out, about 852 miles of routes that are closed. So, of the total 4,000 miles of routes, you'll see that they're designated in that way. Limited designations also include routes that are open to foot and horse travel, routes that are just limited to motorcycles or ATV width, and that sort of thing. Also, in our travel plan, we went an extra step. In a lot of cases where we had, for example, no legal access, we wrote into the plan that we wanted to have legal access. We would work with our partners, we would work with landowners to get that access for the public. And when that occurred, those routes would be open beyond that private lands to the general public. So, the next step in our planning process, as you guys are well aware, we're about to sign our Record of Decision for the Resource Management Plan. And the travel decisions are all embedded into the Resource Management Plan. They're labeled as implementation-level decisions. Implementation-level decisions are separate from the general RMP decisions. And so, what happens at this point is it starts what's called an appeal process. And the appeal process is available for the public or cooperators and partners to appeal to IBLA. There's a fact sheet available to you in this room about that process, and I'm not sure where those ended up.
Sitting in the back.
In the back. To help walk you through that process, how it works. And that's how you would dispute with the BLM route-specific decisions. So, the other thing that's going to happen next is the deferred routes that we're talking about tonight, they'll undergo another analysis process. So, we'll have to collect all those routes. We're required to make a decision on them. So, we'll have to make a decision at some point soon. We'll take those routes, and we'll probably create an environmental assessment, and if, and potentially, an environmental impact statement to make the designation on those routes. And again, that'll be, there'll be a public process that will be involved in either one of those documents that makes those decisions. BLM will continue to seek the cooperating agency participation like we have through, out the developments of this RMP and for the continued revisions of the travel plan. Again, the travel plan will be updated every time we build a new trail or we make a change in designation. The next, other next thing that will happen is we will start implementing our Resource Management Plan. Within our Resource Management Plan, we have about a quarter of our field office in recreation management areas where we specifically focus on recreation, trail-based recreation. we specifically focus on recreation, trail-based recreation, motorized recreation in our field office. We also have a lot of new trail proposals that have been sitting on the shelf, waiting for this trail, travel plan to be finished so that we can get moving on those. And of course, our continued commitment to working with the community on trail-based recreation.
Is it okay if I use the podium over there? I can't see anybody from sitting down. So if I can go through really kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Can everybody hear me back there? Haven't had a chance to meet Mosby yet. My name's Joe Meyer. I'm the district manager here in northwest Colorado. Moved to Grand Valley in end of September of last year. So still learning the area, but I have a long career with BLM and have dealt with these sort of issues many times over the last 30 years. Know that we're focused on trying to find solutions, to work with our partners, to work with the public, to get things that are good for public lands and good for the public who want to use public lands. And I think we get too focused on the negative at times and not focus on our successes. If you saw that kept up with these numbers, we started out with 4,000 miles of roads. And the discussion we've entered into with the county in the last week is over 393 miles out of 4,000 miles. I think we've been pretty successful in getting a plan that pretty well works for a lot of folks. It's important we don't lose sight of that success. Let's get those things moving forward and get them on the ground, and find a way to resolve these differences we still have. So out of the 393 miles that we're in question yet, of these routes that the, that the county's brought to our attention that the public has a lot of interest in for recreation purposes, what are the ones left that I'm having a little bit of trouble deferring? We went through those 393 miles as best we could. Out of that, we promised at least 207 miles of those that we think we can put the decision off until later. I think when we got through the final number crunching, we're at about 209 miles that we think we can defer, we can deal with those decisions later. So that leaves about 184 miles now out of 4,000 miles that we still want to get some additional input on and see what can work out. What are those 184 miles? 79 of those 184 miles, almost half of them, are routes that have no legal public access. And I can't leave a route open on BLM as a legal route that forces the public to trespass across private lands. It's not a good decision for me to make. It puts the burden on that private landowner to have to control that access to those routes. Now, in our plan, as Michelle just pointed out, that at the time we get legal public access across those private lands, those BLM routes will open back up. So that's 80 more miles that sometime in the future we'll be able to work with and get open to the public. There's about 58 miles total that we have significant cultural resources concerns on. Most of those are in the Castle Rock area. We've gone through a long process of consultation with the Native American tribes. That's a government-to-government relationship that we're required to go through by law. They've brought to our attention a lot of areas that hold important sacred significance to them, and they're being damaged on the ground. And for right now, until we find a solution and find a way to move those routes or adjust those routes, I have to take some action to protect their sacred areas. So that's about 58 miles of the total. There's 29 miles of roads that are within our areas of critical environmental concern. Those are areas where we typically have threatened endangered plants or other species where we have some sort of habitat protection in place required by law that prevents me from causing direct damage to, to any species. There's 11 miles, as somebody talked about earlier, I think Commissioner Rose, in the Sarlacc Trail. We've already built the new trail. We've built the new trail and it's open to the public. So there's 11 miles of the old trail that we're going to close. There is no loss to the public in access or use of that trail. The new trail's on the ground, people are using it, and they really like it. So we just got to close the old one. And the last piece is there's seven miles within wilderness study areas. And the wilderness study area designations, wilderness area designations are made by Congress. And there are laws that I have to follow related to wilderness study areas that prevent me from allowing, until, until Congress determines otherwise, I have to manage the lands according to the Authority Act and, and cannot authorize anything that'll impair the suitability of such areas for preservation as wilderness. I, it's not a law I wrote, it's a law I have to implement as a manager of public lands. So that was the last seven miles. So those are the, those are the miles that are left between the 393 miles that we started talking about and what we've already said we could defer. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what those pieces are and kind of got to that point that talked about earlier is what is that information that we can get on specific routes that can help us? Because this is kind of what I have left on my plate. So thanks for that, and I think we'll turn it back to the commissioner at this point.
Did you want a quick review of the tools to do some of the reviews on this?
Sure. We, we can show you real quickly how you can get in and look at all these individual routes online, see which routes are open and closed. And I would strongly encourage all of you who are here tonight to go out and look at those maps. Wayne gave the one example of six miles of roads in a very small area that was closed, but there was full public access on, on motorized routes to get in there. Look at the maps and find your, your favorite places you like to go, and look to see if that road that you usually drive on is open in the plan. Because I think there's a pretty good likelihood that most of the areas you go, there's a way to get in there with motorized vehicles. So take a look at those maps while you get a chance, but we can walk you through some of the tools that are available to, to help you make those decisions.
So for those of you who access to the internet, I just want to give you a quick overview of what's available to you. Of course, the, the maps are available here as well, but there's a way that you can access that same information in maybe a little bit of a user-friendly way. I usually just do a Grand Junction BLM RMP search, and the first thing that comes up is this webpage right here. At that point, click on travel management, and the travel management overview and some of the historic documents and things that we've used throughout the plan. Where, where you go from here is to the 2015 final travel management maps. As pointed out, we, we put the county recreation routes of importance, the ones that we've been talking about tonight, the 393 miles of routes, right up front. So you can have access to that with a PDF map, or the KMZ files, which are the files that upload directly into Google Earth, which provides you with a whole bunch of information real quickly. We also have a specific route report so you can look at each route and determine what resource concerns are out there, what a rationale was for making the decision, and what public comments we had based on each one of those routes. So it gives you all that information in one place. And then also, a little bit more about the rationale for not deferring some of the routes that Joe was just talking about. So all that's available on our website. The other thing that you can do, if you're interested in just the general travel management information outside of this 393 miles, is you can upload all this data into Google Earth and look at it that way, or you can, you know, use PDFs and other maps that are available to you. When you're in Google Earth, it looks similar to this. The designations are different colors. You can click on each one of these routes. It'll give you a little bit of information, like this is Route 01756, and the designation for that route is admin. You can also look to see if we have any mitigation concerned with that route, and then get into the route report that way. And this is what the route report looks like, which provides you with all of the detailed information. So again, a lot of information, but hopefully, we've worked really hard trying to make it as user-friendly as possible, considering all the data that we had available to present to the public.
Thanks.
We appreciate BLM coming today and explaining what they've done and showing us the maps. Again, for those of you who are not maybe as technological, we will have those physical maps at our planning office. People can come in and sit down one-on-one and talk about individual routes that are important to them. So don't feel that if this is too confusing that you can't participate in this process because you can. So one of the things that comes up a lot is jurisdiction. Does federal government even have jurisdiction over these lands? And so I want to turn it over now to our county attorney, Patrick Coleman, to just talk about some of the discussions we've had on a county level about jurisdiction. And there are chairs up here for people who are sitting on the floor.
Good evening. I, I think the, the BLM made a very pertinent comment in saying that tonight, we're receiving input. They, they have a regulatory process that they have to pursue, and that includes the resource management planning, the travel management planning, and the designation of these various routes. The county is a cooperating agency, but the commissioners want to certainly go on record that because they are a cooperation, a cooperating agency, they, they don't necessarily agree with the entire process, or, or even want to acknowledge necessarily that the BLM has jurisdiction over lands that are currently classified as, as BLM lands in the county, or any of the specific roads. The board is working through this process and wants to be a, a, a good cooperating agent and, and help the BLM. And hopefully, through this process, we, we learn a lot about the various roads and their status. But the, the board, I think, very clearly wants to go on record tonight and, and through any possible appeals that may occur in the, in the future with respect to these road designations, that they're not waiving any rights that they may have with respect to challenging the jurisdiction of the BLM or, or the status of these roads, whether it be under the RS 2477 statute that a lot of you know a lot about or may have heard of, or any other legal basis under which the county may assert a claim or, or contest a claim by the BLE, BLM in terms of jurisdiction. And so we, as, as a county, we want to just certainly go on record that our participation and, and our appeal or lack of appeal with respect to a certain road doesn't constitute a waiver of any rights the county may have to contest anything with respect to that road in the future. But we do want, want to participate in this process and hopefully come to some, at least, understanding with the federal agencies and, and the public and narrow the focus. As, as I mentioned, there's 4,000 miles of roads. We've kind of narrowed things down. That doesn't mean the county might, through this process, after the record of decision is, is issued, appeal roads that are not within that, that are, are not within the 390 miles or, or even the 207 miles. We, we may discover information that we believe makes it appropriate to appeal a designation in the next 30 days after the rod is issued. And with respect to the deferred designations, we may discover some information that we believe warrants an appeal based on that designation that, that we're not able to resolve with the BLM. So I think the, the key point is that, you know, we're, we're participating, but we're not waiving the, the county's right and the county's obligations under either federal or state law, statutory or common law. And there, there's a, a very complicated process that could become involved, and it might involve litigation. We, we're not here threatening litigation, but we're certainly reserving the right to pursue through whatever legal means is necessary to enforce the, the county's rights and by extension, the public's rights in these routes. So I guess I, I'll just say that, and that, with that, get back to the, a more positive and cooperative aspect of the meeting, which I think was the intent here.
Thank you, County Attorney Coleman. At this time, I'm going to ask JT Robansky from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, who's representing the governor's office today, to just say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good to see you guys. It's a great turnout. As Commissioner Poglosi just said, I'm here tonight representing the governor's office. John Swartout, they've asked me to come tonight and spend a few minutes. There's a couple of different reasons I'm here. One for them, obviously, and just to let everybody know that the governor's office really supports the hard work and diligence that's got us this far into this plan. We think that this is a, a very sensible solution and path forward on these remaining 209 miles. So we look forward to continuing, working to get to everybody's goals and solutions there. The other, the other reason I'm here, just representing Colorado Parks and Wildlife, we've been involved in this as a cooperating agency as well. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions. I'll, I'll be out in the hall or back in the back or wherever you'd like me. If you have any questions about wildlife or OHV, park stuff, the, the trails part of our agency, I'm happy to have those conversations too. But again, just wanted to portray our support for where things have, have ended up here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, JT. As Commissioner McGinnis said in the beginning, this is less about us talking and more about you talking. We need information from you, and we're asking for your help. So before I open up the public portion of this meeting, I do want to acknowledge Representative Dan Thurlo in the back. Thank you for being here. So at this point, we're going to invite people to come up to the microphone. If you'll give your name. There was also a sign-up sheet in the back. If you have substantive comments that you need the commissioners to know about particular routes, now is your opportunity to talk to us. That's really what the focus of this meeting needs to be so that we can do our job to help protect some of these miles of routes that are supposed to be closed. So that's really what our focus is right now. Clearly, it's a town hall, and your commissioners are open to hearing anything that you want to say. So I'm not going to limit you on that, but if we can stay focused, it'll be a more productive meeting. So come on up to the mic. Who wants to get started? Nobody? Anybody can get up here.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Yes, please. Is it not on?
Hello, hello, hello. Hello, my name is Lee Chalat, a longtime resident in the county. Raised a family here and enjoy hiking, bird watching, and photography. I'm also a member of the Quiet Trails Group. We're formed in 2011. We share a love of hiking, horseback riding, and mountain biking. We also place a high value on the protection of natural and cultural resources. Quiet Trail users are a significant percentage of public land users. Specifically, the Bangs Canyon area is very important to us. And the Micah Mine Trail can be very crowded almost any day, not just weekends. It's one of the only hiking trails in the area specifically designated for hikers. And we support the BLM's plan, in particular, the southern area of the Bangs Canyon. They're, they're in the travel plan. They're responding to protecting its primitive natural area. And there's a number of routes that need to be closed to do that, and we support that. The Tabwatch Trail, which is a motorized trail that is not being considered to be closed, runs smack through the middle of that. And that's fine. It will get motorized people into the wilderness, and that is, that is the plan, and we support that. In fact, our group is involved in discussions that open up the connection of that motorized route to the Highway 141 on the south end. So we believe that administrative closures for the, that area, including Route P 219, P 248, and P 258, all support the idea of protecting resources, the cultural lands with wilderness characteristics, and wildlife habitat. We also support closing P 251, which is down closer to Highway 141. Also, I'd like to ask the county's help in opening, or taking some action to help the BLM regarding Route P 890. This is on the Clark's Bench area, right around Ladder Canyon. If you can help acquire or gain access to, to that area, it will allow that route to avoid crossing private land. So as a county resident, I hope that you're listening to me and that you support and will speak up for hiking, biking, and horseback riding. And instead of looking backwards, if you could look forward and help us develop a one- And instead of looking backwards, if you could look forward and help us develop a wonderful county, thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on up and just talk.
Okay. My name's Ron Ariano. I'm born and raised here. Been in these mountains all my life. I'm an old guy, I'm 75 years old. And I'll tell you what, a lot of these trails that they're closing, old guys like me can't go running out there. We can't, you know, you young guys can go jumping and running and all over the place, but we got to get on those doggone four wheelers to go hunting and I'm not going to quit that. Well, anyway, I want the county commissioners to look at that aspect of it. I mean, all these young folks moving in, that's great and I'm glad to see them, but I'll tell you what, us old guys that have been here, we got a right to those mountains too. And the best way for us to get around those doggone four wheelers, and I'd like you folks to consider that and keep the BLM from shutting it down. Used to be the BLM was a bunch of regular, good old boys, but they're all liberals now that just go out there and shut everything down.
Thank you for your comments. What if we hold applause till the end, if you don't mind? I just want to make sure that we're making this meeting as productive as possible and as many people as possible are able to talk. So Brandon?
Hi, Brandon Siegfried, Director of the Public Land Access Association. You know, we've been working with the county from the get go on this process and we actually helped push this idea of expanding our vested interest routes. And that was done because the BLM in their slideshow during the Club 20 meeting and various other community meetings said that they would not close roads that we had a county interest in. And now we are here, we're focusing on 393 miles of vested interest routes. We're talking like it's a victory, but we're really looking at, if you drive a Jeep, about 1,500 other miles of closures between Mesa and Garfield County. So I don't think we should be acting like we've won something. Based on Mr. Meyer's information today, if we look at all the deferred decisions that we're going to have to wait a year, two, five years for, there's a total of 752 miles of routes that have been deferred because we can't forget about the 545 miles of routes in Zone L, north of town. Also, one area that I wanted to be brought up in this meeting and it didn't make it is seasonal closures. Many, if not all, of the seasonal closures are vested interest routes. The BLM proposes or presents them as if they're staying open, but many are going to be closed half the year. And these are some of the highest value routes in the valley. And, you know, based on FOIA comments I've seen from the scoping period and things like that, a lot of Colorado Parks and Wildlife comments were regarding a lot of these hunting routes as far as for wildlife reasons, they wanted them closed. So I think there's issues there as well. So if we add the 235 miles of seasonal closures, we still have a thousand miles of routes that we really need to talk about that could be or are going to be closed. And we still have a lot of work to do as far as getting historical RS 2477 information to the county. To my knowledge, there's never been a congressional act passed that gives any law over areas of critical environmental concern. There have been for Wilderness Study areas, so the laws they're talking about there are BLM policy, okay? As a community and as a state, we have to start to look at where our OHV funds are going, okay? They bring in about $3 million a year to the state, $2 million of that is going back to the federal government in the form of OHV grants and 60% of those, actually 62% of those grants say the monies can be used to implement these RMPs. And if you read some of the attorney general stuff from the state of Colorado over the years, you'll see how they used to back RS 2477. And now you can argue when you compare them to Utah, that our OHV funds are being used to close RS 2477 routes. So we need to make noise with the state on that. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
My name's Jim Haas. I've lived in the Grand Valley here for about 29 years. I used to hunt a lot. I still shoot a little bit. About all I really do on public lands anymore is fish once in a while. But I'm very concerned about the overreach of the federal government and in particular, the Bureau of Land Management. Nothing makes me more sick to my stomach than to hear "BLM land." BLM land doesn't own an acre. They're not authorized to own an acre. They're authorized to administer. So in my opinion, this is an administration that's run amok. If anybody's familiar with the David Justice Trial, was held several months ago here in Grand Junction, it concerned a guy that opened up what he believed was an illegal restriction to access on BLM lands. And I sat in that courtroom and I listened to the head of the BLM in that district, female, about 45, can't remember her name offhand. And she says, "We're going to close what we want to close and if the county doesn't like it, their only alternative is to sue us in court." So I'd like to ask the county commissioners today, if they're serious about fighting the BLM on this land restriction, what kind of a budget do they have appropriating funds for the county attorney to sue the BLM when they overreach? They're basically taking land over and restricting it by the death of a thousand cuts. It's how many, eight miles this year? How many miles is it going to be next year and the year after that? They're eating up our public access under the color of authority of law, which they do not have. The Constitution doesn't allow for the shutting off of public lands to the public. It's the public's lands. When I looked at this sign over here and it says "Travel Management Plan," I thought I was a free American and I could travel where I wanted to, when I wanted to. I'd at least like to ask the commissioners if they don't have a budget for the county attorney over here, that he can really go after these guys when they overstep or they want more lands closed next year. We're not going to get any help from the governor. He's a Democrat, you know? You may get him to pay lip service, when it comes right down to it, it's either the county sheriff over here or the county commissioners that's going to have to fight the BLM. And I spoke to Matt Lewis the other day personally and he said he's never seen a road that was chained off and he wasn't going to be cutting any locks off chains on the BLM restrictions. So I don't think we can count on him a whole lot. And he's free to come up here and say something if he'd like, but I mean, we were there, five of us, and that's what he told us. So that's all I have to say, really.
Hello, I'm Jim Cooper from the Booklift Auto-Lift Motorcycle Club. And we, along with the county, submitted about 160 pages of comments on the draft, some of which were taken into account in the final and some were ignored. What you can't ignore is what's in the plan. And the analysis of the current situation in the RMP clearly states, resource by resource, that there are no resources at risk under the no action alternative, meaning if nothing happens, not a road is closed or opened, the resources in the Grand Junction Field Office are not at risk. The streams and the water quality, the air quality, the wildlife, all those things are doing really darn well. And if we don't change anything, that is, leave all the routes open, it won't damage any of those. So in the initial phase of the plan, I believe it was between 66 and 70% of the routes were destined for some form of either full year closure or partial closures for seasonal reasons, whatever the reasons were. And if there are no resources at risk under the current situation, what is the policy that the BLM is following nationwide, not just in Mesa County, that closes between 60 and 70% of all motorized routes throughout the West? I want an explanation from BLM on where their authority comes from and also what's the rationale for the massive closures to public access and public recreation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Aldrich-Ariano. I'm married to Ron. I've lived in the valley since 1973 and I used to ride horseback all over all these trails and roads that you're talking about. I used to ride with Frontier Bells Side Saddle Group for a number of years. I had some health events that now prevent me from getting on a horse or hiking or really any distance. I live on 35 acres and I can't really enjoy that. The only way that I can enjoy these backcountry areas is either in a four-wheel drive vehicle or sitting behind Ron on the four-wheeler. So I am prevented from using these areas. These roads are closed. I cannot hike them. I won't have a way to use them. I am really, really, really tired of all these special interest groups, the bicyclists, the hikers, the bird watchers, you name it, wanting special privileges. I want a special privilege. There are a lot of people in this valley who cannot walk very good or hike or get on a horse to get back in these areas. And I'm in retail business, I deal with a lot of these people on a daily basis. I see what their limitations are and they are totally being ignored in this, the closure of these roads. So I would hope that you would consider the people who have no other way to get back in these areas for fishing or just enjoying the day, other than on a motorized vehicle of some kind. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janice Shepherd. I'm a member of various groups in the valley, including a newly formed group, a chapter of the Colorado Archaeological Society. We've had several meetings that have been hugely attended, overflow crowds, we stand-up room only, over 125 people at one. And there are a huge number of people here in the county who vastly want to support the protection of cultural resources. Yes, there was a lot of effort went into building some trails to satisfy motorcycles and mountain bikers and hikers and horse people and very fun trails in the Castle Rock area. But unfortunately, it's turned out to be a hugely spiritual area for the Utes tribe. And much as we would not, I have had the privilege of visiting the Battle of Gettysburg field, and much as we don't want a sea of trails through the Battle of Gettysburg, I can understand if there's a spiritual relationship that they have with a particular area, we should respect that. We should respect each other's heritage. We should try to protect our heritage because it's what's important to a lot of our county residents. I personally am a hiker. I do a lot of volunteer work for the BLM. I was participant in the Grand Valley Trail Alliance Roundtable. That's where different groups come together and try to work on what should be new trails that are appealing to whether it's a hiking trail, a motorcycle trail, an ATV trail. The community comes together, discusses and proposes. The Sarlacc Trail is an example of a great group coming, people coming together. I went and helped. I'm not a mountain biker, I'm not a motorcyclist. I can see how they would enjoy that trail, so I wanted to help. And it's, so I think the future is where we can get some really great trails and roads being developed by the BLM. If we can get past this RMP and into the future development, then we can see some great recreation opportunities for all different types of users. Travel management is a huge balance of multiple resources. I attended that management class, Brandon was there. We were part of the same group and we had a little task. We were given some information and said, "Okay, of all these roads, what are you going to do, given this information?" And I'll quote Brandon here, he pointed at one of those roads and goes, "Well, the obvious thing is to close that one." Yes, he said it. And at the time, I teased him and said, "Brandon, at some point, I'm going to quote you." I bet he didn't know it would be in front of so many people. So yeah, there, some roads need to be closed. I mean, an example was, I was reading in Zone O, there's a reservoir where you need to keep one road open because the bird hunters need to get into the reservoir and set up. But if you leave all the other roads open, there's not going to be any birds there. They're not going to have a good chance of shooting. And so the wildlife guys had submitted a really good comment saying, "Keep this one road open and close the rest." So it's a balance. There's, you've got to balance oil and gas development. It's important to keep people who are off oil and gas pads, so the whole bunch of roads are marked permit E only. And not only is it important to keep most public off the oil and gas pads because there can be leaks. I have unfortunately been on gas pads where there are leaks. And so it's a dangerous situation to get public in there, somebody lights up a cigarette and boom. But it's also, it's up to the oil and gas guys to maintain that road to their pad and so it's not fair to them if a whole bunch of recreationists drive on that road on a muddy day and leave it a mess so that their workers can't then get in. And that's why some, it makes sense to designate some roads as being limited to permit and admin. Another example is stock ponds. Grazing and cattle raising is a huge economic factor for Mesa County and limiting access to stock ponds helps preserve those stock ponds. Some people unfortunately think it's fun to drive through a stock pond and that causes damage to the material they sprayed on the stock pond to keep it from absorbing water and so then it no longer holds water and now the cattle and the wildlife don't have access to water. So I like, I support this notion of a defer, let's move forward and try to see some new recreation coming on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff McCloskey. Thank you. I just want to say that I support lawful control and decision-making of which routes to keep open and which routes to keep closed. And local control, hopefully, I mean, who better to make those decisions than the people who live here and work here and make their livings here? I know there was a petition circulated by the Public Land Access Association requesting that Governor Hickman Cooper not sign the RMP and they, I know they collected about 800 signatures. And I was wondering, maybe the commissioners or gentlemen representing the governor can comment on what that state is, if the governor's planning to sign it and what's that, what that is looking like? Thank you.
What I think you're talking about, Jeff, is the consistency review. The governor doesn't sign off on the RMP. The consistency review is an opportunity for the governor to say whether the RMP is consistent or inconsistent with state laws or policies. And that was where the governor chose not to comment at all. So Mesa County submitted a protest, but the governor's office did not submit any comment one way or the other during the consistency review. That is, to my knowledge, and Joe, you can correct me, I think that was basically the only opportunity that the governor has to weigh in on the RMP. I assume he has the same appeal period we do, but I'm not sure that he'll be involved in that.
I thought I heard, I thought I, maybe I misunderstood that if the governor didn't sign off on it, then it would, it would basically put the kibosh on the RMP, but I guess that's not correct.
Not true. His ability to weigh in was during the consistency review and he did not submit comments.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name's Ethan Predovich. I've lived in Grand Junction since '06. I am concerned- I am concerned, because I am, I love to hike, and I used to go shooting out in the desert area, my dad. I'm very fond of those memories. But I would, I would hate to see this, a lot of these places closed down, because it has sentimental value. Especially, me and my mom and my sisters go hiking on the Micamine Trail. Thank you.
My name's Jody Green. I live at 3038 F and 3/4 Road. I've been in Mesa County for, what, since '64? I've been driving all these routes around here, and I believe that Mesa County has all the right to keep these routes open, under constitutional law and the laws, state and federal. As, according to the Glade Park area, where you guys are closing all those areas up up there, we're already limited on what we can hunt in there, because all the private land. Right now, you can only hunt Lost Horse, Granite Creek, off of Tom's Canyon, Bangs Canyon, the forest that's up there, Oak Hill, which we used to have a route that went off of Oak Hill, went into Timber Ridge, and then came out 9.8 Road, which we no longer have. So that closed off 11 square miles right there, that the BLM did. We need all these right-of-ways open on Glade Park, so people can access it, because we're limited now, because it's almost all private ground. So I would just like Mesa County to know that I'll stand behind them on anything, and if they need some maps that are prior to 1976, were evidence proving that these right-of-ways were there, we just might happen to have some of those. Thank you.
Aloha.
I struggle with our federal officials here coming forth and presenting a positive note to all this, and I just don't see it. I don't agree with it. So I, I'm asking the county commissioners, I'll protest all 4,000 miles, right here, right now, of roads. They're ours. I don't, I don't need a map for that. I don't. It's pretty obvious why I wouldn't. But I detest the way you approach the throne over here, and tell us what you're going to do. And we're the last to hear, really, at the end of the day. You know, yeah, we got to comment publicly, and, yeah, we get to do all this fun stuff. We, you know, producers like me, that give you guys jobs, I get to come here, and, you know, out of the $50 billion, probably, or more, that are taken out of the state of Colorado, the little bit that trickles back in here, and then you come in here and tell us what you're going to do, when you take all our money? I just really struggle with that. And so to come before the throne here and say, "This is a victory for us," how dare you? How dare you?
Paraphrase a little bit. The statement goes something along the lines of tyranny is two wolves and a lamb trying to decide what's for dinner. And freedom is a well-armed lamb contesting the vote. I'm thankful I can be here to contest that vote. I lost my grandfather to cancer in, on November 1st of 1998, the date that I still remember, because he was, had a very special place in my life. And I bring it up, because a month before he passed away, the last big memory that I have of the man who was essentially my father, was gold-panning out on the Dolores River, and then taking him, wasting away of cancer in the deep, up over the mesa, up over the mountain, Calamity Camp, all through there, and seeing the joy and the freedom that he felt at that moment. I'm here to say that you guys can't close these roads down. You can't. Just remember that real freedom, if you choose to close that down, real freedom is that well-armed lamb there to contest that vote, and will be there.
My name's Pat Willing. I'm from Woma. I've been here 15 years. But I've been out, out west, you know, I grew up out west, and I used to be able to go anywhere, and there was no, there was no question. That's just the way, that's the way it was. So I understand all the, the, I don't understand why, why we're going to try to live in a jail here. But anyway, I've got a specific thing here. It's Hay Canyon. And I, I think that's what you're looking for. I'm not sure. You've got 4,000 miles, you've got 60% of it closed, you've got maybe 1,500 already closed, then we're talking about 300 miles. Here, it makes no sense to me. I don't know if my specific miles are in that 393, whatever it is. But Hay Canyon, if a guy tries to hunt up there, and he doesn't want to fork out five grand to pay whoever's running that thing up there, beyond the locked, the big locked gate in Hay Canyon, there's a, there's a, he can't hardly get there. I guess he could parachute in or something, he could walk in, but it'd be hard pressed to carry an elk out. There's a Calf Point Road, some people call it. Some people call it Ho Chi Minh. And several years ago, about around 2010, bicyclists were having a real good time, dropping off the, the top of the ridge there, down to the tub, and then they complete the ride out to the road and get picked up. And BLM closed it, put a big sign there on the access to Hay Canyon. And now, BLM's giving it, giving it back to bicyclists, and they've cut everybody else out, except the walkers. So that was our only ATV, or any other type of ATV, that, that's all we could get up that Ho Chi Minh Trail. But we won't have that anymore, once the BLM closes that. There will be thousands of acres up there at the top end of Hay Canyon, that we, as public citizens, have no access to. And it's not fair. And we talk about administrative roads. Well, BLM damn well should do something about administrative roads. They're locked up. It's, it's public land, but it's locked up, because somebody bought a piece of land and choked it off, and somewhere down the line, somebody let them close that road, which was a public road through there at one time, and it closes access. And so, that's not right. This is, and, and now they've closed the other road around there. There are thousands of acres up there that we can't get to. I wrote it up when I, I sent in my, my pages the first time. BLM completely ignored that, but to a weird twist, they changed it from a ATV trail to a bicycle trail, so they can say they left it open. I don't know. But if I took my ATV up there, when it's, I'd get a ticket. So that's a specific instance where I think that, and I don't, like I say, I don't know if it's in the 393 miles or not. I don't know if it, what is considered, but it's not right that, that those thousands of acres are locked up, and nobody can carry an elk out of there. So, and the outfitters that are there, that BLM is going to allow to drive on all those roads, they're not personally, as a company, running cows. They may lease the land out that they've got, let them run them up there. But they have cut a big zigzag road, which you can see from Ho Chi Minh, on BLM land, so they're not only driving those roads, they're making roads up there. That's not right either. The only other thing I was, is I got a request from a friend to mention the Left Fork of Beryl Springs. It's a very nice place to ride an ATV, too. And I think that's up for closing. That's all I got. Thanks.
My name's Belinda Toth, and I'm a mother of two boys with disabilities, and I've got four boys total. And let me tell you that when you close off these roads, because we'll go out for an adventure, we don't know where we're going. We don't have a destination in mind. My great-grandfather was here in the early 1900s, and they, they were all the way from rifle and Craig, and, and Calamity Mesa, and, or Calamity Camp, and all, all around. They worked wherever work was. They mined, they did all kinds of stuff. They even did a mill. So we have a lot of family history, but when we go out for an adventure, we don't even have a map, most of the time. And we cannot go if he can't go. He's in a chair. And if you guys look at your Census Bureau, how many people, just in this county alone, are on disability? Those people are being discriminated against. Seriously, this is serious discrimination, because we're basically being told, "You cannot go unless you've got two good legs, and a good heart, and bones and joints that can carry you up." I want to say that we have interest in Bangs Canyon. We have interest in Ladder Canyon. Brown's Hill, that goes over to Utah, we have interest in that. Again, Calamity Camp. My dad was in there. He, he lived in one of those rock houses. They hauled water. So it has historical value to us. The seasonal closures are terrible. I will, I'm not a hunter, but I will side with those guys on that. They've got to be able to manage as well. How much money does a hunter put into the state's economy? How much money does the ATVs put into this economy? How many fees do bikes, bicyclists pay? Do they pay any fees at all? They're allowed to continually go places where the rest of us, we pay for, but so often, we're denied. And so, you're cutting out adventure for a lot of families who have no other way to get it. Thank you.
My name is Eric Freckle. No, Reckle, without the F. Reckle. Anyway, I support all the roads the BLM has closed. I support that. That's great. Why? Because I am an advocate for wildlife. And I think that the more roads we close, the better off we're going to be, in terms of wildlife. And what's good for wildlife? It's good for hunters. As is just mentioned, it's a good economy for the, brings in good economy for the area. So closing roads is going to benefit wildlife, and to me, we want wild places for wild things. That's what they need. So let's close our roads and increase the wildness out there in Mesa County.
I don't think they'll clap for me either. My name is Mary Herdard. I'm actually a newcomer here. I've been here four years. I came out of Alaska, which has far more land, far more federal land, far more open land than any other place. And yet, we still have the same problem that is here. And that is, as we get, our population grows, as we get more and more people impacting fewer and fewer places, we have to make some decisions about what to keep open, and what to close, what to protect. I don't hear that they're closing every road to the motorist. I hear they're closing some of them. And they're closing some of them when they are repeat, when they're, when they're environmentally destroyed already, and just need some time to, to rehab. But when we look at what's happened, we have bigger and greater populations of people. We have motor vehicles that are getting much more powerful, can go into stretches of places that never was possible before. And yes, 15 years ago, you could go wherever you wanted to go, because there wasn't this population. There also wasn't this concern for what's happening to our environment. And yes, it's happening in Alaska, too, and it's happening here far faster. And I advocate looking very carefully at what's happening with our land, and that as different groups access it, yes, close roads that need to be closed, open them again when you can, but just because I can't go in the form I want to go, doesn't mean it's a good thing to leave it open. I think everyone has a right to get out there, in whatever way they can, in whatever way they choose, but we don't need to have it all to one group, but there has to be a sharing. Thank you.
I'm J.J. Fletcher, and I just wanted to speak out for the Native Americans. I have a Native American culture in my heritage. My mother and I are American Indians, and I don't see that we're looking at that aspect of it. The Indian was here way before a lot of the other settlers came in here. My family came in here six generations ago, in the 1880s, and settled on Canada Creek. They ran cattle. We've hunted western Colorado. But my point is, as an American Indian, is this going to be the second time that I'm pushed off, and pushed towards the reservation? There's areas on Orchard Mesa that I ride my horse, and I have permission from Harry to ride through Orchard. And I ride responsibly, and I take that same attitude when I ride on BLM land, that that's our land, and I want to make sure that I ride, hunt, fish, whatever I do out there as far as recreation, and leave it better for the next generation. I want to make sure that my grandson, Sawyer, can enjoy the same things that I've enjoyed as an American citizen. But again, this was all American Indian land at one time, and I guess I'm here to speak for the American Indian. Thank you.
My name's Darryl Andini. I came here tonight with a friend of mine, and I, quite frankly, wasn't intending to stand up here and say anything. But that being said, I feel like I have to say a little something here. I agree with the gentleman here, being good stewards of the land. We need to be careful. We need to take care of our land, so it's here for generations to come. But also, at some point, we have to draw a line in the sand, and say, "No further." We have the federal government telling us what to do on our daily lives. Do we really need them telling us what lands we can and cannot be on? I say no. We need less government, not more. We need more freedom, not less. Thank you.
My name's Anna Elliot, and I'm wearing my Western Slope ATV t-shirt. It was, I had a tough decision. I'm also a Friends of the Mustang member also, so I get both sides of it. But I wanted to comment on the gal from Alaska, recently here. I agree a lot with, a lot with what she said, but I, I am more in favor of having our county and our state make those decisions, instead of the decisions being put in the hands of the federal government. I think those are the, better make those choices on, on what roads needs to be closed, and just a fair and open way this hearing's being held right now, gives me a lot of confidence that our county and our state can make better decisions for what's good for Colorado Mesa County than the federal government. In being both of those clubs, Friends of the Mustang and ATV Club, I, I broadened my scope on our federal lands out here. And in being the Friends of the Mustang member, I realize that there are a lot of wild horses out on public lands that are hundreds of thousands in captivity now, because BLM budget, the money isn't there to maintain and take care of those animals. And I'm concerned about the money and the budget available to now be able to take care of closed roads, too. I just, I'm in conflict with, in my mind, about a budget that our native animals, Mustangs in captivity and holding, spending years in captivity, and, and now spending time on closing roads. I just, it's, it's a confusion for me going on, and thank you for your time.
I'm Harry Talbot, and I just left, came here after the Indians left, and Fletcher's Indians. I'm Harry Talbot, and I just left, came here after the Indians left, Fletcher's Indians. And so I've been here a long time. And I would like to say that first of all, something needs to be made clear. Who does the land belong to? It belongs to the people of Colorado. How do I know this? I know this because if you take Colorado revised statutes, there are 19 pages in the last book that show the land that has been ceded to the federal government. This land in Mesa County has not been ceded except for the post office and some other places like that. So land belongs to the citizens of Colorado. The BLM is a public services corporation. That's a subdivision of the United States of America Incorporated Major. And so it's a public services corporation. A lot of what they call law is actually an extension and an overreach of public policy. And it may be rooted in some kind of a law passed by Congress somewhere several steps back, but we have federal overreach everywhere. We have it in the EPA. We have it in the Corps of Engineers, who was supposed to be originally operating in navigable waters, and now they want to manage the banks of little streams in Colorado and things like that. Another thing I want to say is that the way we are organized in counties, the sheriff has a lot of power. The sheriff is elected. The sheriff takes an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado. And I think that oath can be taken seriously, and it gives the sheriff a lot of power as he exercises that oath. And I know of counties in the West, I've studied this sheriff thing, I got really interested in it. There are sheriffs in the West that actually tell the federal contractors what they can and can't do in their county. And if you'll go to defendruralamerica.com, you'll see a section on sheriffs, and you can go down and you can read about these sheriffs and what they do. There aren't very many sheriffs that do that. And I think it's hard for a sheriff. A sheriff has to feel that he has supported the people, and our sheriff will certainly have my support in doing this, and I think a lot of the people that spoke here. And the sheriff would have to have a lot of courage and be very open to the people and use the full powers of the sheriff's office. Secondly, the commissioners have a lot of power. I think commissioners don't need to sue the federal government. They need to tell the federal government what they can and can't do in Mesa County. And so, you know, I may be overreaching a little here, but that's what I'll be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you, John. Thank you, Scott, for doing this for us. We don't get an opportunity to regress our government very often. My name's Kevin McCarty. I'm from Clifton, Colorado. I'm going to follow a little bit on what Mr. Talbot just said, in that in the Enabling Act, which made Colorado a state, it states specifically that the land, the public lands, are held in trust for the citizens of Colorado to be returned to them in a reasonable time. Is 139 years not a reasonable time for you to return those lands to us? Question one. Question two, and this is the 500-pound gorilla that I don't think anybody in this room wants to ask, but frankly, how can we trust you on any decision that you make when we have seen in the last six months, you go to the Thompson Divide, where there were leases for oil and gas that had been in place for years, and you broke those contracts? And you go to the Colorado Wyoming Mine up in Craig, where a 20-year agreement now is about to be broken by the federal government? An agreement entered into on all sides, and you feel free, the government feel free, that you can break that contract at any time? How are we to trust you that you're not going to come back and break the agreement and close these roads that we're asking you to keep open in two years or three years or five years? There is no trust for your organization or any federal organization in the West right now.
Don Pettigrew, I live in Mesa County too. I just want to tag along with what he just said. J.J., I think we're all Indians now. Because the government's going to do it to us too, just like they did it to the Indians. I'm kind of a numbers guy. I'm an engineer. And I just sat and figured, we're talking about 4,000 miles of road in a million acres? Are you kidding me? That's about 5,000 acres of road. How much damage can be done by that? Very darn little, because the zero-action option says there's very little impact. So why are we even thinking about this? What is the purpose? What is the real core purpose behind this? What does the federal government, what does the BLM, what are they trying to take away from us and protect by doing this? They're not trying to protect it from us. We're the best stewards of the land that they are, not the federal government. They're not stewards.
Hi, my name's Mike Harlow. Been here about 15 years. Ran for sheriff. My main concern was what happened at the Bundy Ranch. It was deplorable, to say the least. And the first people pointing guns was BLM. That was nipped in the bud, not because of any action by BLM. It was great restraint shown by militias. You know, those crazy people with the guns that we've been hearing so much about? Those loose cannons? Nobody got shot. But wow, it was close. And that was my main reason for running for sheriff. The sheriffs are, well, they've formed up an association of constitutional sheriffs. And I think that's great. I totally support that. It's constitutional. And the federal government is getting very unconstitutional. And they're supporting an unconstitutional Washington government. And I'm not going to go into that. It's too long. We don't have enough time. But I talk to people. I'm a holster maker, so I talk to a lot of gun people. I'm a gun enthusiast. I shoot a lot. And everywhere I go, you know, conversations start, "Well, if they come for your guns, what are you going to do?" It's always the same answer. You don't want to be the person showing up to collect the guns. And the same thing, this land closure, I don't have much experience with it, but one time I wanted to go see the Colorado River by Rabbit Valley. And they got that trail up. It was beautiful. Beautiful, beautiful. Had a good time. I got close enough to smell the river, but then there was a chain that said, "Oh, too much impact." And there was a white Dodge BLM coming out, and I flagged them down and asked them, "What's going on?" "Oh, too much impact." "Oh, really?" And I just, I don't know, I thought about that for a while, and the name of that river is the Colorado River, not the Federal River. I'm a Coloradan, and I can't go to the Colorado River because someone in the federal government said so. I don't know. I think that's got to stop. Thank you.
Brandon Siegtry, just a few comments on some of the things that were said. I know my name is brought up a couple of times. Number one, I've always said I'm okay with closures. Okay? In fact, I don't think any of us would be here if we were talking a 15% to 20% closure rate. You know, with the exception of maybe some high-value recreational routes. The BLM got permitting authority after Flitma was passed in 1976. So, you know, if you're talking about a route that was built after that, they actually have the right to close it. Prior to that is when we have a legal argument. And that's when we talk about RS 2477. Some people talked about hunting and more animals. Mesa County is a top-five Boone and Crockett, Boone and Crockett and Popinion County for Colorado for deer and elk. Okay? We have trophy animals here. We have extra cow tags because our elk herds are too big. In the 80s, we probably had 20% to 30% more routes than now. Don't forget about all the roads the Forest Service has been closing for decades. And we had record deer herds. Okay? So there's science on both sides of this, as far as the impacts, the animals. PLAY, Public Land Access Association, I did a FOIA request about a month ago for the BLM. We got six or seven new access easements that the BLM paid for in the 60s and 70s, usually $400 to $600. One of the routes goes up Canada Creek. And so we're getting that information to Pete Bear right now. And it's my opinion that they didn't even check their own access easements when they decided to start doing these closures. So we paid for the access easements, and nobody knew about it because they get forgotten over time. So we're doing a FOIA request for the Forest Service right now. Multi-use, you know, I've been really involved with this for three years, and I can tell you that one of my biggest disappointments has been the public and the various organizations involved. So we're supposed to be protecting multi-use here, which means multi-use for everybody, but we're a greedy country. And so we hear a lot of people arguing about more single-track, more less-than-50-inch, more horse trails. And for the most part, we're talking about converting a Jeep or truck route to a single-track or to a mountain bike trail, instead of having a true multi-use spirit, which is, hey, if it's a legal right-of-way, why can't we all use it? So one of my biggest disappointments has been from us, the public, in this process. As a guy that's given presentations on jurisdiction, I've heard several people make comments, I wouldn't say in a threatening fashion, but I can tell you this, the federal government has the public lands in Mesa County, 99% of them are held in a proprietary interest only. In 2001, the state ceded concurrent jurisdiction over the Colorado National Monument. That being said, the federal government still has police authority over your actions, especially if they damage federal property. So I wouldn't get the idea that tearing down a gate's a good idea. Somebody mentioned somebody else's name that tried to do that. The federal government does not mess around when you do that. And if you damage federal property, the county can't help you. Nobody can help you. You're on your own. Because they do have police powers when it comes to that type of deal. And also, I've researched a lot of the stuff as far as what sheriffs are doing what, and I can tell you, less than 2% of sheriffs are standing up against the federal government. So I don't think it's really fair, and I know of none in western Colorado, it's not really fair for us to point at our sheriff and expect him to do something that less than 2% of sheriffs are actually doing. So I think we have to be reasonable, we have to know the facts, but we most partly have to work with our county commissioners and our sheriff before anybody thinks about doing anything to, in the direction of civil disobedience. Thank you.
My name's Darryl Stafford, retired master chief of US Navy, 30 years through Vietnam and Gulf War number one. I've got a lot of family sitting here. We were raised in this country. Our mother and dad was raised in this country. He helped build the Colorado National Monument for the CCCs. I have several questions I would like to ask. Why does the public have to prove that we need to keep the road open? Why doesn't the BLM have to prove that road needs to be closed? I know they close a lot of roads. I've seen roads over on Brushy Ridge in Elkhorn Park, they closed the roads. You couldn't get this whole area where you, I've never seen too many elk up there, but I like to get up there and hunt downhill. And I had a fish and game guy, or a Forest Service guy come up to me, because it was probably the Forest Service or the BLM. And me and this other 70-year-old guy, actually, he was 80 and I was 77, said, "We closed this road for you." Can't get up with your four-wheeler. You can hike up them big hills, and I can do pretty good for my age, and go up there and kill an elk, and you're going to bring that out across four miles of country at 78 or 80 years old? That didn't seem like he hadn't closed them roads for me. Everything I have is, I know I belong to the group that passed years for public access lands. And it seemed that one time, we had the state attorney general and the fish and game working with us to keep these roads open for our hunting and stuff. And I thought they had opened up some of Hay Canyon. I heard a lot a while ago about, a lot of that wasn't open anymore. They spent a lot of money, the state attorney general and us worked hard to get a lot of these, they were public roads, back open. And the biggest problem was private owners coming in here and buying a 48-acre chunk of land right in the middle of a public road and locking the gates like we talked about a while ago here. What penalties do you put on one of them individuals that limits our access by locking up a public road so we can't get to our public grounds? That's my main point.
Hey, my name's Jerry Smith. I've lived here quite a number of years and have done a heck of a lot of four-wheeling around here, do a certain amount of hiking and everything else. But I want to speak a little bit toward people I don't think have been very well represented here. We've had a few people that have kind of touched on it, and that's out-of-state hunters. We've all heard, you know, that there's big numbers of dollars that get spent here every year by out-of-state hunters. How in this whole process have they been really recognized or even given the opportunity to be recognized when they don't live here? They don't know what's going on here in the local area. And without that representation, we're finding, you know, that there's guys that have been hunting here, their families have been here for generations and generations. So their culture and their heritage to this thing isn't being represented at all. And I think that that needs to be remedied. Part of my commentary on this RMP had to do with that, that there should be some kind of a recognition that if you're going to close an area or a trail, there should be some kind of a warning put up on that trail for at least two years so that people who come here from out of state have a clue what's going on. Because they don't know until they come and find a closure sign on the thing. So we need to recognize, you know, where a lot of our economy comes from in a positive direction. We need to be showing a lot more latitude toward what they would want rather than what they're getting. Thank you.
My name is Todd Nicholson. I am a native, almost 54 years, be 54 years tomorrow. My concern is we have never gotten more public land. We keep losing public land that gets traded or swapped or something like that. We've never got more free, open space. We keep losing it. Nothing personal, Mr. McGinnis, but I lost some prime hunting area to be able to get my dad into when that area behind the monument was made a wilderness area. That made me really sad. And even as my father got older in Parkinson's, I couldn't get him out very much to do any shooting or hunting. I would like to see us work to getting more access for not only motorized vehicles, but bicycles, horses. Why can't we make more trails for everybody? The BLM gives the golden shovel to the bike groups if they go out and they cut a trail, and then they say, "Hey, we want to get this open." Because I've seen them do it the last three or four years. And the press is out there, "Wow, this is a great new bike trail we've opened." I don't see that with motorized vehicles. With quiet space, there's thousands of wilderness acres out there. Everybody's more than welcome to go out and access. I can go hunting and go out there and walk half a mile from my vehicle that I drive in on, and it's quiet. I can mountain bike in on other trails, on BLM or Forest Service, get off, it's quiet. It's not like it isn't out there. We need to quit getting stuff taken away from us, our privilege or our right as American citizens, and give them back more to us to be able to use it no matter what our abilities or disabilities are. We need to keep the lands open. Thank you.
My name is Rick Weber. I have a small 40-acre place, Whitewater, Water Reeder Mason, been there 30 years. Moved here in 1976. Former firefighter, that's why I moved here, retired out from lung damage, former Marine. When I got here, first of all, I want to hang on to all these people that they said. I agree with everything they said. So I'm going to go a different place. When I moved here, I felt free here. There are free, so you could go anywhere. I go to, I take my horse and team and go to Rabbit Valley and do whatever I wanted to, didn't wreck anything, didn't hurt anything, real good stewards of the land. The trail- The trails I ride today, 40 years later, look the same as they did when they were here 40 years ago. So, there's no damage, wildlife, abundant wildlife, more now than ever was, turkeys. I no longer feel free here. It's coming in, it's approaching on my freedoms. As a former Marine, it is really deeply suited in my heart to be free. That's what I hate to see, is the big government slowly approaching all of our freedoms. So, I hope that all of you see everyone is little inches of the laws of freedom. Crucial to fight back. And that's my statement today. And thank you for your time.
My name is Kent Deemer and I've been here in the valley for 21, 22 years. One of the things that I think that we're, we've got to focus on is there's 393 miles of trails here that we're talking about. And a lot of this, from what I heard earlier, the BLM does not have really any choice as far as closing or opening. I mean, the land going up into the Wilderness Study Area, those, that's, the BLM really does not have a choice but to, to close those. Land that's closed, that's completely encircled by private property. I don't agree with it being completely encircled by private property, but that's the way it is. It is. Close those lands in there, there's, they're really, the trails in there, we don't have any access to it anyway. For the most part, it's basically going to protect the rights of those landowners, whether we like that or not. They are still the landowners and they have rights as well. So, it's just going to do nothing but more, but protect those rights for those landowners. So, there's also trails, Sarlock Trail was brought up. With the Sarlock Trail, there's another trail right beside it that's going to be closed. We've got a great, brand-new trail that's ATV, motorcycle accessible, and the trail that is not such a good location is, is going to be closed. I really don't see that that's going to be an issue for places like that. I totally agree with a lot of the ATV riders here that these are our lands. At the same point, our lands need to be, be taken care of best as possible. And BLM seems to have been working towards this with numerous public meetings that they've had. There's been lots of reasons, times for comments already. The BLM has a job to do and this meeting here tonight is, is nothing more than, it's, the BLM has a job to do. And this is kind of getting in the way of moving forward on what needs to happen as far as our public lands go. So, I am in support of the BLM in this issue. Thank you.
My name is Greg Madison. I'm here on behalf of my neighbor Max Cray. Now, Max is a noted geologist and pretty active in the community here. And he's kind of representing what is probably the redheaded stepchild of oil and gas industry, but I promised that I would read him this letter that he wrote, so it goes as such. "I oppose closing any roads or trails navigable by vehicle. Simple fact that the road or trail exists is evidence of a need for the road or would not have been built originally. In 1953, 62-years ago, I was assigned by my employer to map the geological structure of the Piceance Basin. It was our practice to drive up a canyon trail or as far as possible and then walk up the top of the drainage divide. Mapping as we traveled, the next day, the next drainage, we were very, we very much appreciated those existing roads. Our mapping resulted in the drilling of several gas wells whose production has required many workers and resulted in the payment of royalty on gross return to the mineral rights owners. Colorado for severance tax, finance for the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, the county or the country ad valorem tax, is that familiar to you? Okay, on production revenue, nobody else knew what that was. Plus, property tax on items such as tanks, pumps, pipelines, et cetera. Often, an overriding royalty is payable. This production has provided us with electricity, heat, and gasoline for our present lifestyle. What more can we ask of the roads and trails in the Piceance Basin? Why spend money to obliterate roads and trails that are not hurting anyone? Leave them alone. Max Cray." Thank you.
I know I've had a turn, but I thought of a couple of other things. I'll just make it quick. First of all, I hope that what's being said here does carry some weight and this is not just an exercise we're going through that really doesn't mean anything, which so often I think a lot of people feel like, let us have our say, but you do what you want anyway. So, I hope that you do take to heart what people have said here. Secondly, I have a conflict in my mind that there's always talk about preserving the wilderness areas and yet there is a huge push to make the Colorado National Monument a national park to bring in more tourists. I had five bighorn sheep trot across the road right in front of my car last week. It was fairly low in the elevation. It was this side of the tunnel. I drove that road almost every day, twice a day. And yet, there is bicycle races promoted, foot races promoted, tourism promoted, protection of what is there, the wildlife and the beauty is not done. And so, I, it seems like people are talking out of both sides of their mouth. On the one hand, you want to protect these wilderness areas that very few people go to, but let's bring in the rest of the world to see the beauty of the monument. And I just don't get that. So, I just, it is about the monument. But at what cost? At what cost? So, I hope that you would see the contradiction that's going on there. Thank you.
My name is Jack Albright and we've been to quite a few meetings. And so far, it just seems like it's an effort and futility because we say something to the BLM and they say, "Well, this is a 20-year mandate. We're gonna do it regardless." The problem of it is, and then we have too many special interest organizations that stand up and say, "Well, if I can't walk on that trail, you shouldn't be able to drive on it," or whatever. I mean, we had the Sierra Club show up to some of the meetings. We had Grandma's Against, for pristine wilderness. What the world? We got plenty of room for everybody. It's supposed to be a land of many uses. In other words, we should be able to get along with bike riders. I get along with four-wheelers. I get along with, with people that walk. I get along with people. You wave at a lot of people, it's like, "You're not on a bicycle, buddy. You're in trouble." I'm sorry. This is supposed to be our land. We come to these meetings and we, we try to have a compromise, but we're not talking 200 to 300 acres. We're talking 2,000 acres or so. Because I've looked at the maps and, you know, you say, "Well, these roads are being overused." If you close half of them down and you think the rest of them aren't gonna be way overused? We can't maintain, if you can't maintain the ones we have now, then what makes me think that you could maintain them after we've closed most of them down? And now, the traffic has increased by 300%. I mean, I've been to the mountains, it's already increased. And I hate to see it close more and more trails down and then it just increases the amount of people that's gonna be on the existing roads. And why can't we all get along? As every organization should be able to say, "Hey, if you want to walk on that trail, wonderful. If you want to ride on that trail, great." Instead of this, everybody beckoning and saying, "I want to be because I'm a special interest and it ought to be pristine for me." I'm saying, "It's all our land and we need to keep it. And BLM, it's our land."
My name's Shelley Hatch. I'm actually a new resident to Colorado. I'm originally from Utah, but I just spent two years in West Virginia. Do you know how much public land is in West Virginia? Zero. 36 state parks. It costs you about $10 to $20 to get into each state park. Pennsylvania has 121 state parks. How much public land do they have? Zero. Do you know why we moved to Colorado? We came back here to have our free, public lands that we can get 10 minutes on the mountain, enjoy our evening. We have a family, we raised a family and I'm sure all of you do. You know, we hunt. The reason that we hunt is so we can feed our children for the whole winter. We send food with our college kids to school. We support our children too, using the public lands. You know, I don't envy your jobs that you guys have. It's a tough, tough decision to do this and stand up for our people's right, but that's what you guys are elected for. You are elected for the people to stand up for our rights and help us as a community grow and as a state grow. Let's keep our public lands. Utah's fighting for their public lands. They're winning. Now, I come to Colorado, I would love to come to Colorado and see them win and fight for their public lands so we can continue this down the years to come to, you know, to enjoy our public lands. Granted, I understand that, I'm a Jeep-er, we go in our truck, we go on the mountain. Do you think it's really us desecrating the ground, you know, as we go up? We don't go up a muddy, a muddy lane. We don't go up a muddy creek. You know, I mean, we stop, we take care of our lands. We pick up garbage. You know, we pick up more garbage going up a trail than I've ever seen anywhere. It's amazing how many bags of garbage and stuff that we can do. It's not always us. It could be a hiker, it could be a biker. We bike, we hike. We have a Jeep, we have a four-wheeler. We have all that too. But you know why? It's because we love our public land and we love to be here. And I'm grateful that I came to the state of Colorado. And I hope you guys can help us support this by keeping our public lands open.
This will be our last speaker for the, the open portion. We want to give people time to look at the maps and conclude, we have to close this building at 8:00.
I just want to acknowledge the handicapped veterans. Nobody's mentioned how hard it is for them to get out in the woods. And also, as far as the wildlife, I live on Glade Park and it's unbelievable how much the wildlife herds have increased. I never seen bear at my house like I do now. I see elk at my place that I never seen before and the deer herds are coming back. I worked in the oil field and I watched the antelope herds grow. I've seen bear up on the ski boats in the summer. The animals are not that afraid of people like a lot of people think. And they do blend in with us quite well. And that's all I want to say. Plus, I am handicapped and if it wasn't for my four-wheeler and my truck, I'd be screwed. And a lot of old people cannot ride four-wheelers. They have to go in a vehicle. So, please, don't close those roads if they're existing. I agree with that guy. There's a reason there was a road there to start with. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here today. I have Pete Bear to just give us, give you some information on what county resources we have put towards this effort on dealing with the road issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Puece. Again, my name's Pete Bear. I'm the Public Works Director for Mesa County. As many of you are aware, we've been working on this issue for numerous years. In particular, the last two to three years have been very heavy work-related issues on this with staff and such. And I want to reiterate again that we do have staff available. If somebody's confused as to whether a route's open or not, or a thing that, you can come in on Tuesday and Thursday afternoon. I'll give you a phone number, but it's also all over 244-1765. Call it, we'll get you a staff member to sit with you. We can look at particular routes, we can go through the reasoning. You know, I do give BLM credit in the sense of they, with the vast amount of data, I mean, there's, with 4,000 miles and broken into segments, as you can imagine, huge amount of data to navigate through to, to really pinpoint to a certain area or a certain thing. That being said, I do want to commend that many of the public already has brought forward, the PLA in particular, and others have brought forward pertinent documents and pertinent pieces that we then bring to the commissioners and say, "Here's our recommendation on certain routes and roads to bring forward to the BLM for discussion." So, I'm gonna continue to encourage, I heard a couple folks say they may have earlier maps from pre-1976, which I won't go into the whole FLITMA thing, but if you have data that you think is pertinent, please get it to us at Public Works. We will then make sure that it gets through to our attorney's office and, and to our discussions with the commissioners on these particular routes. And I would say whether it's one of the 393 or if it's something else that you have, bring it to us. We will then move through it and dissect it and go through there. And as Commissioner Puece said, they, the commissioners have been great and have made every attempt and, and we held a series of public meetings along the last couple of years, a big, huge one at the fairgrounds, some in Gateway, some in Versailles, trying to get this. This is a very complicated component because of the sheer amount of data in there. So, I would say, if you've got particular data, you've got particular interest, or you just want to come in and see, please get hold of us. We'll set an appointment. I can guarantee you that if, if we get overwhelmed with appointments based on this here, I would just simply have to go to the commissioners and they would easily allow me to add more staff time or more hours into that. So, so this is a high, high priority for them. They tasked us with gathering as much information, pertinent information as we can for that. So, I'm just here again to reiterate that and reiterate that we're there. Give us a call. It's both on the website, Mesa County Public Works, just remember that. Call in, say you want an appointment. We'll set that appointment up. We've got folks that can navigate through this very quickly and get right to an area. I heard like Hay Canyon, you want to come see what's there? For sure. Come look. We'll, we'll pull it right up. And then, we have a comment sheet that you can fill out that we will take into our comments. The status we have as, as Mesa County is, as mentioned, as a cooperating agency. So, we do have some ability to take your comments and make sure that they get to the proper place. That being said, I'll just reiterate what Patrick said in the same sense, we have not given up any rights to push forward on, on other various means as we go through here. But we are working this process and we do have resources set up to take your comments in. So, that's all I wanted to say. As was mentioned, there are boards out there, there are some comment sheets. The boards are attempting to show the 393 miles and the 178-plus miles that were talked about. So, you know which ones are being deferred for later decisions and which ones are on the table right now of those 393 for closure. So, anyway, those are there. But as I said, if you want more individual, please come in. We'll set somebody with you and look particularly at the area you want to look at.
Do you, I think you're gonna give a dollar amount of resources spent or is that what I think that?
I, I don't think we were preparing to give a dollar amount or anything like that.
I just wondered if you had any more resources available. Does that mean time, does that mean money? Does that mean?
Nobody said that.
Yeah, no, no.
None of us have said that.
No, what we're saying is exact opposite. We have resources available. Bring your information in.
Do you have any more resources for us?
Yeah, yes, yes. I'm sorry. If it did come out, what I was saying is if there's pure, if there's a lot of overwhelming public that would overwhelm and the current resources have identified, we will get more to make sure we get that information. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you all for being here. Please look at the maps and if you have comments or anything you want to talk to us about, we're here.